So here we're going to call the order and determination of a quorum, which it looks like we are. The item number two is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on March 15, 2016.
Doing motion to approve is submitted. Second.
Under new business, first item is to election of officers for 2016 to 2017.
And this is for the chair and vice chair or just the vice chair?
Correct. I believe it's chair and vice chair.
Should we do in first, the chair?
Chair.
Okay.
Can Jim stay? Can you say chair?
Well, not chair. Gibbs the chair.
And was this Gibbs' first year as chair?
It was his second.
Was it his second? And is that the?
Limit.
Tenure?
That's the tenure. Then you have to split years.
Okay. Well.
Make a motion that for chair, we go with Jim Thompson.
I'll second that motion.
I'll recuse myself from voting.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And vice chair, I believe?
Make a motion that we appoint Dave Becker as vice chair.
Second.
Second there.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. The second item on the agenda is for 116 North Bilbrow Avenue, Melissa and Ted Cassidy, requesting to demolish existing carport garage and to construct a new garage and a carport in its place. So, the property is located at 116 North Bilbrow Avenue, on the east side of North Bilbrow Avenue, across from the Central Magnet School. The house was constructed circa 1952 and is not a contributing structure in the East Main Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. The property currently has an existing carport in which the applicants would like to demolish and construct a new garage and carport in the existing location. The property owners have gone to the Board of Zoning Appeals in December to get the approval of the location of the carport, which encroaches five feet or within the five-foot side setback to the property, and they got approvals for that. However, the garage portion of the carport is going to be within all setbacks. If we look at the screen in front of you, shows the picture of the house along North Bilbrow Avenue as viewed from the street. Second picture shows the property directly to the north. And here's property directly to the south. And here's the picture of the existing carport as it is today. The property owners have submitted the building elevations for the renovation addition of the garage and carport. The materials that they will be using for the garage portion will be brick on the front and hardy board or fiber cement siding on the sides. This portion of that. The applicants are in the audience and are able to answer any questions that you may have. Yes, please. Thank you.
Ah, yes, this is my question.
While Ms. Cassidy is handing that out, I will have to let everybody know, I have to recuse myself from voting on this, since she's my daughter and Ted's my son-in-law.
Oh, I'm glad you gave us this, Ms. Cassidy, because I was, my biggest question was where the new, where your new garage would be located. I was concerned that it would be, that you were planning on moving it towards the sidewalk, towards the street. And, you know, and going by there and looking at it, I was afraid that it would overpower the looks of your house. So I think this is a wise location you've chosen, you know, to keep it in the background.
Yes.
Just to be sure that we're all understanding the drawing, because sometimes it's difficult to read. The blue is the additional space and the green is the existing carport, but you're going to put another carport back.
Exactly.
In the same location. So it's the accumulation of the green and the blue will be the new footprint of the new building.
It's the green and blue.
And the enclosed part is the blue and the green is the open-air carport.
Well, they're going to slightly change on that, because the existing carport, how do I say it? You'll see a corner where the existing carport is in the green and the blue overlap.
Is it this space right here?
Yeah.
So that will be garage.
That'll be garage.
So the footprint of the carport is not moving forward, it's not getting any bigger, it's just that the area from right here is going to be bricked in?
Yeah.
And that will be where garage door will be, based on the drawing, is that correct?
Yep. In the building dimensions, we are increasing it four feet in width, but we're not moving it forward or moving it back, we're just making it wider to accommodate the cars. Twenty feet's just not quite enough space on either side.
Jim, I'm sorry, but I don't know what you're talking about, green and blue.
Oh, you don't have a color one? I've got the color one, sorry.
Okay.
By happen chance. This little square, this is the blue part, that's the new garage, but except it's going to take that little space right there. And then the rest is the carport. You're welcome to this if you'd like.
Okay. No, that's fine. That's fine.
So basically, it becomes a nail-shaped structure. Okay. Do you want to go ahead and describe the brick color and, or the brick that you're going to use? Not the color, but just?
We've got exhibits.
You've got exhibits? Okay.
The original part of the house is in red brick and the existing carport has the red brick, so it's by intention to repurpose, although my husband thinks it's going to be a bit of red颜色.
We're going to match.
We're going to match the red brick. I would like to repurpose the existing red brick for the part of the wall.
You're matching which red brick, the house or the garage?
The garage, the existing garage and house match.
Oh, they do match, okay.
This was a pass out that that guy had to show up and serve.
And then, what is the garage door made of?
It'll be a metal garage door.
And it'll be white, like your?
Yeah, the overhead door will be white, yeah. And the other, the one inside entry door, we found one that we like in the catalog, it's also a steel door.
Does the door part go on the sides?
Oh, yes, I see.
We have also contemplated, now that we're starting to write something out, the proposal said a metal room. We're contemplating using matching shingles?
Which are on our current roof on our house. This is a, this is an extra shingle from what was done with our house when we had our house roofed eight years ago, and we're going to try to match that to the roof, since we probably can't fit the budget to do a metal roof.
I'm sorry, just to repeat, you're matching the asphalt shingle, the architectural shingle that's on your house.
Mm-hmm.
That's a fairly common available product.
Yeah.
Sounds like a great idea. I had one other question about your drawing on the right side elevation, where you have all those blank walls of hardy plank. What do they face?
They'll be facing our neighbor on the south side.
Okay, the?
The right side elevation you're asking about.
Yes.
Yeah. And there's a, there's an actual six-foot tall picket fence running along that side too, so they won't, they won't be in view of much of what's over there. And there's also a hedgerow on their side of the property also.
There is.
Probably because they didn't want to look at our old dilapidated carport.
I was just concerned about all that blank?
Yeah.
Wall, you know, it's not very neighborly.
Okay.
So, no more questions, I would make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is for 205 North University Street, Dan and Pam Jockwin, requesting to remove the existing balcony on top of the sunroom to restore the sunroom to the original condition and replace the balcony doors with windows. And the second request is to replace the concrete sidewalk with a stamped concrete sidewalk. So the property is located on North University Street and at the corner of East College Street, right across from Central Magnet School. The house was constructed in 1940 in the colonial revival with the gabled roof style of architecture and is not a contributing structure in the East Main Street Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. There are two requests with this property, as mentioned. The first request is for the property owners would like to remove the existing balcony on top of the sunroom and to restore it to the original condition. With that request, they will be replacing the balcony doors that currently exist with windows, and the windows will match the existing windows on the house. And the materials for the windows will be wood. And then the second request is to replace the existing concrete sidewalk that is leading from the roadway to their home, which I will show you in a minute on the picture. So here we have the picture of the front of the house along North University Street. Here's the property directly to the north, also along North University Street. And here's the property to the west, along East College Street. And here's a photo that was submitted by the applicants. The bottom picture is what currently exists today with the balcony on top of the sunroom. And on the top picture shows what they would like to restore back to, removing the balcony. And here we have a side photo of the balcony and the windows on top of the balcony. And here we have the two doors that currently exist leading to the balcony, but they would like to remove those doors or replace it with this kind of a window. And then here's a photo of the sidewalk that they would like to replace with stamped concrete. And the applicants are in the audience and are able to answer any questions that you have.
If you would state your name and address, just for the record.
Pam Joakine, 205 North University Street.
What questions do we have of the applicant?
I was, I want to know about the sidewalk. I was confused about what, are you, there was a brick sidewalk shown and a concrete.
The?
The concrete and the stamped concrete in that area, is that what you're going to do, or?
It's a concrete sidewalk leading to the brick, well, it's not exactly brick, it's called?
Quarry tile.
It's a tile.
Okay.
That's sort of where the porch, a front porch would be, and that's cracked up too.
Uh-huh.
So what we're talking about, hoping to do, is replace the concrete sidewalk and the tiled area?
Okay.
With probably either a herringbone brick, in keeping with the style of the house, or possibly some sort of slate. A stamped concrete, rather.
Oh, so, either way.
Stamped concrete.
Stamped concrete.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any examples of?
I do, I only have the one book.
I'll pass it.
But this is a good picture of the herringbone brick.
Okay. And it's going to be on both the concrete and the tile?
Yes.
You're going to replace all of it to look like that?
Will this stamped concrete be, if it's the quarry tile, will it be painted to be the red color? And if it's slate, will it be a gray or a black or a green or a red slate?
Well, we could do the brick, if it's a herringbone brick lay, we could do that in the grayish color that you see in this picture, or there's another picture in that book that's the red brick color. We just didn't know about red brick, because we don't want to try to match the existing brick of the house. It might clash more than it would.
I would recommend you don't try to match it exactly, because it's in a different plane and it's not historic to that house, so I would, if you want to do the herringbone, I would recommend you do it in a different color. Could be a different red, but just not the same red, or gray, or anything, but I would recommend to you that you don't try to match it, because it just never will.
That's what we thought.
Well, ma'am, would you mind going back to the podium, so we can hear you on the microphone?
And I just want to be sure I'm clear on this, because you mentioned stamped concrete?
Yes.
So, no matter what you choose, whether it's to look like slate or?
Brick.
Brick.
Right.
It will be concrete?
Correct. Okay.
Even though the picture shows real brick, is that right?
That's a stamped concrete product.
The picture is?
Yes.
Okay.
It's all stamped concrete, and it looks so authentic, I mean, it looks like brick.
Yes, it does.
Will the stamped concrete, you'll have, let's say, a red brick or a gray tile, or whatever the faux masonry piece is, will the mortar joints be called out or be painted the same color?
They'll be painted.
Could you come forward and give us your name and your address as well?
I'm Inspector. Lucas Neely. I'll be helping her with the project. The concrete has an admixture that's mixed in when the concrete is actually batched, and the tent is added at that point. And then when we seal it at the very end, that'll draw out the full color of it, so there won't be any paint, it'll be mixed into the concrete itself.
It's a through color, it's part of the mix, but again, the question is, is the mortar joint that's implied with the stamping, will it be called out differently or be the same color?
Usually, when you do the overlay, you're going to see a darker tone within the joint itself, but it's not a different dye or color, it's just how it takes in the recess joints.
And this will be sealed?
It will be, yes.
Map finish?
That hasn't been decided, I mean, but that would be fine.
Yeah, I'd say probably.
I think a cloth finish would not look so good.
No, I don't think so either. I agree. The Nelsons just did stamped concrete right across the street from you.
Yes.
So would it look?
It'd be a different.
Similar?
Same exact product, matter of fact, it's the exact same person that installed that particular driveway would be doing this.
He is, yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Yes, that looks nice. Uh-huh. Have you considered just doing regular concrete for your front sidewalk? Just, or would it be, does, when you put the new concrete in, is it too light now?
You can always do an admixture of color into the concrete to get a color if you want, but typically, new concrete's going to be fairly light colored.
Yeah, and not aged like our concrete is.
Yeah.
Jim knows these things.
I would recommend, as a board, we vote on one item at a time, and let's just perhaps vote on this. Is there any further questions regarding this particular issue or request? If not, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the railing to be removed.
Let's do, let's just do the sidewalk first, if we could.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the sidewalk request.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Let's now concentrate on the roof of the sun porch. Any further questions on this?
I had a question, the drawing that we're given of the new window you want to put on the roof, that you want to put, you see what I'm saying, in place of the door. It appears to have a panel at the bottom, and I don't see a panel at the bottom of your other windows on the house.
It does, it's actually got a, those windows have a cement ledge at the bottom of each one of the wood windows, so we'd be duplicating that.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow.
At the bottom ledge, you should be able to see it, matter of fact, you can't tell, because all the white is kind of running together.
Uh-huh.
But that bottom ledge on that window is cement, it's a concrete product. Is that what you were referring to?
Is it a poured concrete or is it a precast concrete seal?
I couldn't tell you what they did at the time.
It's probably a poured.
Probably. Be my guess, but who knows?
I had wondered the same question, Linda, is that that shows a panel which looks like wood, is it possible to put in the same height window, a concrete seal, and then infill the missing parts of brick with brick?
It is, that was one option. If you look at the rear windows on the house, and we've kind of gone back and forth, it would really just depend on how close we can match that brick, that, you know, we're looking at a house of 1920s. But, you know, I guess that depends on you guys as well. But what they've done in other areas, where they ran into the same issue, is you've got a header above a window that's on the outside, that's actually a wood product to fill in the gap between a standard-sized window and what the existing brick roll locks would allow for.
I think a way to get around that is to put, is to match the windows, the triple to the rear of the building in that same elevation, and put in a pair of windows, put in a concrete seal, and if you want, then get the brick, and if you recess it just back just a little bit, where the door masonry frame is, and recess a brick as close as you can get. If you try to match it and tooth it in, it's going to look very ragged and not very effective, but if you recess that brick infill panel back just a hair, it will reduce the visibility of the change, I think.
May I say too, it's really interesting, because when I walked over, actually Lucas and I both did today, to the driveway of the Nelsons, and looked up there, you cannot see underneath those French doors at all.
You'll see the top quarter of the window.
But you will see the top.
But anything that we do beneath is not going to be visible anyway, but we can, like I said, we're happy to do what we need to do.
I just think, I think it's when you take the railing down, and first off, I applaud you're taking that off the roof.
Yes.
I just think it's horrible. I'm so glad to see somebody undoing a mistake. And I think it's going to look far better, but I think if you put the windows back, I think they ought to match as close as possible, the ones on the same elevation, by doing the brick, excuse me, the concrete seal and the, and then matching the brick as close as you can, but you will never match it, so if you set it back like a slight, the slightest of niches, it'll, it'll help the color change. And I think that would look a whole lot better personally, I don't, I'm just speaking for myself, I hope y'all will.
No, I'm concerned about that too, Jim, I'm glad you could explain it better.
What is, what is the finish for the roof going to be? I assume now it's EPDM with this plywood?
Right now, I'm fairly confident it's just roll roofing underneath a deck, it's a water hazard, to be honest with you, it was poorly done. And there's a lot of wood products that aren't treated products that are rotting, so it just, it needs to come off one way or the other, but we'll likely go back with a rubber roof.
Will it be a white EPDM or a TPO? Will it be a black one?
Likely black.
Yeah, the black will make it hotter in that room.
It would, but that unit is controlled, climate-controlled, separate from the rest of the home.
Any further discussion? You know, we, early, I'll jump in and say, early we talked about the sidewalk could be a slate or a brick, I'd like for you all to make that decision and get to Robert or?
Joe.
Joe, and let us know what it's actually going to be. And on this one, the roof material, because we don't know how visible it's going to be because of the covering that's on there now, the deck, and it would be nice to know, because if you can see it, you know, EPDM has little stamps by the manufacturer on there, it looks like little freckles all over the roof and sometimes, and so it'd be interesting to know what you're putting up there. Any further questions?
Mm-hmm.
By the board, by the commission? If not, the chair would welcome my motion.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
And this approval includes matching the new window as closely as possible?
Correct.
To the existing window.
Is that part of your motion then?
Yes.
And the brick below the concrete seal and all that we've discussed?
Right.
Does that, agree with your second? Okay. If, no further questions or discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, your motion carries then.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you for investing in the?
Yes.
Community, it's a great improvement.
Thank you very much.
Joe, any further business?
Not for me.
We have a calendar every year?
I believe we do.
We haven't been quite a while.
Do you know if that was approved, Robert?
Say that again.
The calendar, 2017?
We have a calendar, yeah.
We have a calendar, so.
And?
Was it approved by the board?
Well, I don't think so, since we met in March.
Okay.
Well.
Can we approve it in the next meeting? Brenda, if you could send it around prior to the next meeting as part of that package?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few things.
Please.
First of all, I'd like to welcome Jennifer Garland to our commission, she is replacing Kurt Wade, who was elected to council, and she is also from the planning commission, correct?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Would you like to take a minute and just tell us a little bit about yourself?
Well, I would be happy to. Recently joined the planning commission this fall. I've been in Rutherford County, Mercury, Tennessee for most of my life. I did go off to University of Tennessee Knoxville for a Bachelor of Architecture and came back home after all that was said and done. I do tend to specialize in healthcare and hospitals, but do have a passion for historical work as well, and architecture in general, so I'm happy to be a part.
Thank you.
Happy to contribute.
Glad you had your hair. The 300 block of West College is also in our historic commission, isn't it? Wes, the three hundred block of West College is also in our historic commission, isn't it? I was wanting to look at the map before I came...
West College, isn't it?
Uh, I'm sorry, East College.
The, what, which block, Jim?
The three hundred block, that's it.
Yes.
There's a lot of work going on, on the even side in the home, and I don't know if anybody's been by. I don't know if it's all going back as it was originally.
I've talked to the owner and the contractor, excuse me, uh, and they've informed me that they're doing repairs on the house. Uh, they're taking the old, was it fish scale siding?
Mm-hmm.
And replacing it with the new fish scale siding, and, and there's some repairs to the wood that was to the side of the house that was, uh, deteriorated, uh, and they're gonna replace, I'm not sure if they're replacing windows, but they're gonna replace wood windows with wood windows. Everything they're doing on the house is repair and maintenance. Uh, what we haven't gotten yet is an application stating that. So we kinda slowed them down or stopped them until they get that application in. Uh, but I've been over there taking some pictures and, uh, the siding looks, it matches real well. And the windows look real, real good too. But, uh, it's, it's a lot of work.
I'm glad you've been involved with it.
Yeah, it's, it's, there's a lot of work and, and it was deteriorating pretty bad. But, uh, best I could tell and what it was explained to me, it was, is, you know, it's a big job, but it's still maintenance and, uh, and, uh, repair. And I told them if there's anything new going on, that's, uh, new introduction to an appearance to the house, then they'll have to come with the commission.
Oh, that's good.
And Joe will follow up on it.
Okay. Uh, the last thing I have is, um, I know the city of Nashville is heavily involved in this, but Airbnbs? And I'm not sure how or what difference we would have if an Airbnb comes into our historic zone. Maybe you or Joe could follow up on what's happening in Nashville and what our city's gonna do?
I don't know that we have regulations for be Airbnb's yet.
Well, the biggest concern in Nashville is the ones where the owner's not living on the property.
Mm-hmm.
Are they approved already for, um...
For Airbnb's here?
For our zone?
Well, if, if the appearance of the house or the property in the historic district changes...
It doesn't.
Uh, then we wouldn't get involved. If it's the inside that's changing, uh, if it's gonna be, uh, just like the house we were talking about, they're, they're thinking about turning that into a lawyer and attorney's office. Uh, if they do that, they're gonna require some parking, uh, and we'll need to see that. So if, if the outside changes, the appearance of the property in any way, then they'll have to come for the commission. Uh, other than that, if it's, if they can do work inside the building to make it comply with the codes and it doesn't affect the appearance of the house, then, then, uh, it doesn't need to come for the historic commission.
But I thought, you know, if they ended up making it a multifamily or a business when it used to be a private home in the historic zone, I still thought that we got involved.
Well, if they go from a single-family house to a multiple-family dwelling, then they would require parking. And then we would get a chance to look at that, because they're gonna change the outside appearance.
It comes through your planning commission, your planning department, but not, not us.
Not necessarily the historic commission.
Have you had any applications for, um, downtown?
Not that I know of.
Not that I'm aware of either. Uh, there has been some discussion about whether we could attempt to, uh, draft some regulations. Uh, at this point, uh, we have not attempted to do that. Nashville's certainly gonna have a different kind of attraction as a potential market for that. Uh, we're, I believe Murfreesboro's close enough to Nashville and we also have enough of our own events going on that I see some potential for that here. Uh, in fact, I think there are already some people advertising on, uh, you know, social media and Craigslist maybe of, of having places that are available, uh, for Airbnb-type rental. We have not at this point either elected to or been instructed to, uh, attempt to draft some regulations for that. I think it'll come, I think we'll have some, something will happen and we'll be requested to do that, but at this point, we have not. So it, it would be no, you know, I guess if you, uh, any one of you who would, would decide to take a six-month sabbatical in the islands or something, you could rent your home out to, to anyone that you wanted to. Uh, and same as, you could rent out a room for a weekend or the whole house for a weekend. You had a fine line between when it becomes a commercial, I mean, any, any residence, any, or any housing of any kind that's rented to another person is to some extent a business, uh, use of that property as opposed to, and it's also a residence, but it's a business for the owner. So, uh, it, it, it's tricky to try to regulate, uh, and yet I expect it will be, uh, asked to, to come, to have some, at least some minimal regulations and registrations, uh, at some point, but we have not yet.
I have a friend who has one in Nashville and one of the problems she has, uh, repeated to me is when she rents out the whole space, which is a, is a carriage house behind your house in Germantown, is that the neighbors have complained about the noise and the parking. I would love to see the city be proactive about it. Because it's gonna happen, for sure.
Yeah, and I wonder about, you know, historic edge field, for instance, if there've been any people there who have wanted to, um, be an Airbnb and what the stipulations Nashville has made on that.
I am quite sure it's happening all over Nashville.
I was just thinking about historic districts.
Oh, yeah, everywhere, probably in Nashville.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the reason I bring it up is because there's a rumor that the old Jameson House in the five hundred block East Main is an Airbnb. I thought, it's time, hopefully...
It's time.
That we take our heads out of the sand and know what we want to deal with it.
Yeah. Well, Joe, you think that's something you can contact Nashville and find out about their historic zones and what they do about Airbnbs? That'd be great.
No problem.
How would that differ from what's in the zoning ordinance currently with, uh, the definition for a boarding house and, uh, not being available in single-family districts? So even if you were owner-occupied and you rented out space in there, you technically couldn't do it in a single-family zoning classification.
What you have to do is what we did with ours, uh, back in ninety-eight, I mean, yeah, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, is you get a special use permit from the city.
Right, because you operated a actual bed and breakfast activity. Um, we have a little bit of an issue in a few neighborhoods I know of where owner-occupied person stays in there, but they also are renting out space within the house. And it's in a single-family zoning classification. So if you check the uses permitted in the zoning chart, you're not supposed to have both, that going on.
Accessory apartment kind of rentals are normally not allowed.
Yeah.
Uh, in a single-family zoning.
You've got, you've got something in the books right now that, that perhaps people would be in violation of.
That would be if you were renting out a room, uh, or, or garage apartment or something, or something of that nature. Wouldn't necessarily apply if the house is vacant and, you know, the owner's absent, uh, whether it's for a short time or a long time, but, and then has a single family, uh, occupied for a short period of time.
Any further discussion or questions, new business? If not, I'd welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
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 We're adjourned, thank you.